Um, I will just say everyone's name and you just say your, repeat your last name. Carolyn Coffey here, Lynn?
Linda Jacomo here.
Megan?
Megan Brinsey here.
Catherine?
Catherine O'Callaghan here.
Steve? You're muted.
He was here.
Steven Brown here.
Sarah?
Sarah Pease here.
Elaine?
Elaine Preslow here.
Thank you. The first thing would be to approve the minutes from last month. Thank you Bronwyn. Were there any questions or comments on the minutes? And if not, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
All in favor? I think we can just do this as our, everyone unmute and say aye.
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 Thank you. Unanimously approved. Megan James, take it away.
Thank you. We actually have a little bit to talk about tonight and some discussions. Let me just share my screen. Can you see my April report?
Yep. Yep.
Great. Graph is. So, um, so this month marks kind of, or last month marked an entire year that we were closed. So I just thought we could do a quick review of items circulated. It's pretty much to be expected. We saw a huge drop in all of our physical items. And we saw increases in circulation in our streaming and e-item categories. So I didn't see anything shocking here. We did have a little conversation today about audiobooks. They dropped quite a bit. We were talking a lot about how not only was it a physical item, but people also weren't commuting. So that really added to people not checking out that type of item. So just something for you to all to glance at, but quite frankly, I didn't see anything too alarming. The only thing I thought was really interesting is that our streaming actually doubled, even though it doesn't look like that on this chart because of the large number when it comes to books. But it did almost double, which was kind of interesting.
So are audiobooks, are they the, like, books on tape that are physical in the library versus the ones that you get through hoopla and Libby and stuff?
Correct. So our audiobooks are just books on CD. And streaming is going to be our hooplas and our canopy and things like that. And ebooks and e-audiobooks are essentially overdrive. And those are separate because those are collections that we actually purchase for. Whereas our streaming collections, our collections aren't given to us, if you will, are provided for us. So we don't have to do any collection development on those platforms.
Thank you.
Yep. So, and then we have some exciting news. Pam Fahey, who is the Coacets Health Director, did a walkthrough of the library and went over my plans for reopening, which she approved. So we will be reopening on May 4th, which is a Tuesday, for regular hours, Tuesday through Saturday. And we would like to take advantage of the fact that MPLC is not forcing anyone to have a certain amount of hours open and stay closed on Mondays, at least through, just through the summer. And the reason for that is, there's a few reasons. So we'd like to do a full inventory of the library collection. And there's a few reasons for that. One, it hasn't been done in a very long time. And two, curbside was a very lengthy manual process. It was about a seven-step process. So there was a lot of room for error as we went through and errors were certainly made. So we'd like to go through and clean up. We have a lot of items on the shelf that are marked in transit or maybe weren't discard, were not checked out, tracked in properly. Also because of the quarantine, things got confused at times. So that paired with a change in the way that we catalog. I think it would be a great opportunity if we could start going through and doing an inventory. And essentially that means operationally that we're going into stacks with the laptops and we're taking one book at a time. And, and checking it for its cataloging record and making sure that that's correct, making sure that the barcode's in the right place. And making sure that its, its location is correct as well. So it's a fairly lengthy grueling process, but it's really important that we get something like that done. And I think this is a good opportunity to do so. People counters were installed, so that project is all finished, which is fantastic. That'll help us with our reopening, as we talked about, and also our numbers. Our material quarantine, so we've stopped quarantining our materials. We were at a three-day quarantine. But at this time, the CDC has come forward and saying, said that it's very unlikely to get a virus over a surface. And also our entire staff has at least their first shot. So we're feeling pretty safe with moving away from material quarantining. We have a new library page starting, which is really exciting. Her name's Maggie Young. So we had three different staff members leave us this year for pages. So we're excited to fill those hours. The Degret girls went to college and woman very early on in COVID decided that it was no longer a good fit for her. So we're excited to have Maggie. She has participated really as a page since she was very young. Sharon's told a great story about how she used to like to come in when she was real little, about 10, and she would ask if she could shelve the picture books. Totally unsolicited. So she's always had a passion for this. We're excited to have her. And so she'll be a great fit for that position. And the bad news, so we're losing Janet Dwyer after 17 years with us. She has decided to retire beginning of this coming August. So we're disappointed, but we're excited for her and her next steps in her life. She has agreed, after a little bit of begging, to be a substitute for us. So, you know, if we need her, somebody's called out, we're unable to fill a shift. She said that if she was free, she would come and help us out. So that's great because she's not somebody we have to train. She'll know exactly what to do.
And then
Yeah, it's, yeah, it was really nice that she offered to do that. So in terms of filling that position, just working with the budget a little bit when it comes to the town, and I'm hoping to fill it basically as soon as possible. So her last physical day in the library is going to be July 1, and her last day on paper is going to be the end of, or the middle of August. So she's using up her time to, to end her, her time with us, which is acceptable and fairly normal. So, so we'd like to fill the position, you know, come July 1 rather than beginning of August. So we'll be posting in that position hopefully fairly soon. So this is the bigger project I'd like to discuss. So I've been on the Pride Month Committee for a few months now, and one of the things that they're interested in having are some flags around town. And so I was hoping, it was asked if the library would be interested in doing something like the flags, the pride flags. I'm certainly interested, but I feel like this is a decision that needs to be made by all of us because of the philosophy behind it and also just the visual impact it's going to make outside of our building. So what I would like to do is order flags that are representative of the kind of the most popular pride flags. I actually didn't know there were so many pride flags, but there are. So we would put all these pride flags out and then each one of them would have one of these. They're just garden labels. And they would have a number with a QR code. And if you scan that QR code, it's going to go to a webpage on, on your phone that would talk about the history of whatever flag that you were in front of. I originally wanted to do kind of plaques in front of each flag. But the cost to have a weather resistant plaque that would be large enough for people to be able to read and actually have some decent content on was just too expensive. So this is something that I'd like to do. I realize that is a bold statement. But I think, you know, we are a building that is committed to education and we educate people from zero to 120. And I think we're a great department to help be the start of celebrating Pride Month every year.
Megan, does the town have a stance on something like this or does it matter?
So we are working with the town. So some of the select board members, school committee members. So they, they, this is something they'd like to say.
Okay, good.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Full disclosure, our daughter is in a same-sex marriage. So we have an oar in the water. And she's had some fascinating experiences as a gay person, who is now, we're quite proud of her. She's the chief medical officer in North Carolina. So she's been very successful and she's had to deal historically with folks that weren't familiar with gay issues. And we have an active diversity committee in town that very much wants to see this become an annual event. In a conversation with the select people, select people that was on the, that's on the recorded, all of them were very enthusiastic with the exception of one who said, well, isn't this an issue of cancel culture? Which didn't make any sense to me, but I'm going to invite him out to lunch and see if I can learn more about cancel culture. But I thought that would be useful.
This sounds like the antithesis of cancel culture.
Sorry?
This seems like it is the antithesis of cancel culture.
Well, the comment, the commenter went on to say, well, there's some people in town that are very conservative and feel like they can't speak up regarding their own views because they'll be excluded or not seen seriously. And apparently at school, this individual claims that parents, a couple of parents have told them that their kids don't speak out at school because they're afraid that they'll be criticized. And I'm trying to say exactly what I heard without making this an opinion piece.
Megan, is there a particular flag that you think would represent us the most?
Us?
Wait, is there one that's kind of, I would think we'd want to go the one that's most inclusive?
So, yeah, so the idea of flying is kind of as many as possible without going overboard is kind of what we're thinking about when it comes to being inclusive. So I think it's probably hard to read on my report. But, so each one of these flags represents like a different kind of section of pride, if you will, or separate entity of pride. So there's a special flag for lesbians. There's a special flag that represents bisexuals. There's a special flag that represents transgender. So, you know, it's not just, so there's the pride flag that we see now. And then there's also a pride flag that was done in 1977, which is considered kind of the historical, the beginning of the pride flag. So then there's a gender queer flag as well. So I'm, you know, just educating myself on this as well. If you go to pride.com, it kind of talks about each one of the flags and gives a little history blip about each one. So I think, you know, showing a good group of the pride flags, and there are, like, there's 50 of them. So this is kind of the, the core ones that we're concentrating on. I shouldn't even say core, but these were like the ones that, you know, started the idea of having different flags representing different groups and that it's not just pride, that there's different cultures within pride as well. So, you know, I think, oh, we have. Sorry, we have two people waiting to get in that I didn't hear. Hi, Mary Lou and Meg. Oh, Meg shouldn't have been a panelist.
Meg, is that Meg Wheeler?
I haven't had anybody join us before and I hit the wrong button.
Catherine?
Catherine! You're under Meg Wheeler.
I couldn't figure out why I couldn't like get gallery view or unmute or anything. And now I realize it's because I had to do a meeting last week and I had to be signed in as Meg because she usually runs the meeting and she couldn't do it. And I realized I was still signed in as Meg. So
Oh, okay.
But I am here. I heard the whole thing.
Okay. Sorry about that. I should have let you in sooner. I just I didn't realize. Okay, anyways, so.
Mary Lou wants to get in as well.
She's here.
Her, her, she's muted still.
Okay.
See if I can ask. Yeah.
Both Catherine and I sent you the link.
Hi, I've been here for a while.
So, sorry, I was giving my report and not watching people trying to get in.
But I could hear you.
Oh, good. Well, welcome.
I see you.
Good. So, you know, I think we're an appropriate department to do this and, you know, something that I'd like to see every year come from us. We also have some programming as well, but this is really the most visual and bold. So I think it's something that needs to be discussed.
So how many flags are you talking about?
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Oops. 14.
And we're not concerned about who we're leaving out? That's 14 out of 50, right? I'm not suggesting we fly all 50, but.
I think a couple of them though, I like, a couple of them though are, are fairly all encompassing, right? And then there are some that are more narrow. And I think that we're putting out, you know, suggesting we would have the ones that are more all encompassing out there. And then some of the other ones that are more narrow as a way of educating people that there is more than just the rainbow flag.
And if I could jump, jump in, I know that there's also, to Sarah's question, there's also Juneteenth, which celebrates people of color, which is about the same time and the diversity, the local diversity community is working on that as well. So. And there'll be programs at the farmer's market. There'll be programs as part of the art center. So there'll be a lot of, of different programs ongoing, talking about all sorts of different groups that some people would characterize as marginalized, but in reality represent, you know, the crossword quilt, not crossword, the quilt.
Patchwork.
Thank you. Thank you for the words.
How big are the flags? Again?
I'm hoping to get their three by fives.
Three foot five, five foot. So those are pretty big flags.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're not three by fives. Hold on. I was looking at that and then I thought they were too big. Right?
That's what you said in the notes.
Oh, no, it is three by five. I think the other choice was eight by something, you know, it's.
That would be too big.
Yeah.
A pretty good size. I mean, that's like a human being height. So that's a, that's also pretty big.
Speak for yourself.
Yes, thank you, Catherine.
How are, how are you hanging them, Megan?
So in the report, I included the hangers. So they're fairly low to the ground. They're like, they're garden hangers. I can share my screen again. One moment, hold on.
They're like the things that hold bird, bird feeders or
That's right. They're like the little hugs.
Shepherd, kind of thing. And I guess I'm all for the project. I guess my question would be, do we want 15 very colorful flags around the building for a whole month? And, and I just throw that out there as a question. And if everyone thinks great, great. It's that's all.
I, I love the idea of them being out there. My only question is, what about bad weather? Is this going to end up being like a daily, semi-daily project for the staff? Is that a concern?
Catherine, that's a good question. It's something I thought of because when I did the lawn signs in the beginning of COVID that were like the, displayed our, what our programming, online programming was, those didn't last very long and got destroyed fairly quickly. I was glad that they were there to bring a little color, but wished they were a little bit heftier. So these are a little heftier. So these flags are outdoor flags. And also the stakes themselves are wrought iron. So we've got a pretty sturdy situation. We don't have the kind of flimsy like real estate, not even the real estate ones, but like, you know, fundraising type lawn signs.
So they just have to be moved when they mow the lawn?
Yes. I would like to, my idea, I see them being put on, that was Sawyer. So like in way up against almost where our doors are, there's like that cement that's probably meant to be a walkway, but it's not used as one, kind of right up against those close to the building.
Are 15 of them going to fit across there?
Yes. It's a pretty big, it's like almost the length of the entire building.
75 feet.
Three, five, three. They hang three by five is down, right?
Well, they hang down. Oh.
Yeah.
Three is the crossways.
Yeah, so you need
45. 45 feet.
Those three times 15.
Well, assuming you want a little space in between, you know, you'd need more than that. But yeah, I guess you're right. I just, I didn't know with the topography with that hill and everything, whether, whether it worked. But that's a good place. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Or feedback?
I, I think it's a great idea. I think you're always going to run into somebody who thinks it's inappropriate. I think you're just, you know, I mean, is that a reason not to do something? In my opinion, no.
Why we're doing it. It is. It's because we need to, you know, spread awareness for this group and show that we're on their team and that, you know, we support them and we welcome them to the library and our community. So, you know, the, the reason we're going so visual on this, at least in my opinion, the reason I wanted to do this is we can do as much programming as we want. The people are going to, that are going to come to that program are going to be people who already generally accept that group and accept them into our community. We're not necessarily going to get people to programs who don't accept that group. But the flags, you really aren't going to be able to avoid. So you're going to drive by and you're going to see them. You don't get to make the choice of attending or not attending. You're driving by, you are attending. So that's part of the reason why I wanted to go so fairly bold and visual about it.
Well, I think it's, it's actually even more than that, Megan, for me. I mean, as I've said a million times and will always say over and over again, libraries are monuments to equality. We are the public institution that actually achieves equality at the standard that all others aspire to. And I think it's really critical that we, that we keep setting the standard.
Good point.
Well said.
All right. I think you got your go.
Great. All right. Thank you. All right, we'll go to our next.
How much is all this going to cost and where does it fit in the budget? I guess would be the only other question.
That's a good question. So the flags are fairly inexpensive. They're about $5 apiece, $5 and some change. And the stakes are about $10 each, which is probably where the expense comes from. And we're just using some funding that the friends have given us as our yearly budget. Because this year was so weird with funding, it's been a great year to kind of tackle some of this type of purchases because our, we don't have a ton of programming.
We can use the stands for other things later.
Like what?
Nice. They can join all the recre, they can join all the recreation stuff down below. Actually, you know, we could always get other flags with programming information on them and use them for marketing.
Absolutely. Overdrive, get your ebooks here. Yeah, that's great. That's a great idea. It's better than those flimsy lawn signs.
Or, you know, Mama Steph today, when we go back to, you know, bringing people in, you get Mama Steph today and you put that one out, you know, or
I like that.
What have you? Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Megan, did you have anything else?
Um, so I just have, we had an outdoor story time on Monday, our first one. It went very, very well. Sharon had 12 families come.
Great.
Everyone, we have our cones out and nobody ran away or so that was successful. And I just want to mention that our budget was submitted, our level of service budget was accepted. The increase is actually, that's not correct. I pulled it from the town warrant and noticed that there was a mistake in our budget. So that's actually an incorrect number, but it did go in as we had chatted about and is going for a vote at town meeting. So that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. And fantastic that we don't have to go in front of the advisory board.
I thought that was great myself.
Perfect. On the, then the, if there's nothing else for Megan, we can move on to the bills. Did anyone have any questions or comments or is there anything that we need to know about Bronwyn?
Everybody. Does anyone have any questions? It was actually a really big warrant this month because we're so late in the, in the month. And there are two warrants to approve. One's just the small, we had to do the Kennedy's program and that had to be paid earlier. So Carolyn came in and, and signed that. And then the larger one, traditional monthly one. So I don't know if there's anything that's unusual. There's a couple of large expenses. Most of them are things like annual subscriptions. There's some technology stuff that we've, we've been, have to, have to pay for. And I can't think of anything off the top of my head that seems, you know, unusual or, or out of the ordinary. But if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
My, my only question was, you know, looking at where we are, you know, we're nine months into the cycle and we've used up a lot of our allocations. Are we going to make it?
We're actually 10 months because this is April. So we just have May and June and then June B.
Okay. I think of it as being the end of March.
Yeah, because they will only have really two more warrants and then the June B. So
Right.
But yeah, Megan, if I've, and I've been kind of trying to keep a close eye, it's hard because you want to spend up to the line, but not go over. It gets a little tricky, especially with some of these renewals that we weren't really planning on, but, you know, had to get, had to get paid. So.
Yeah, I know some of them are front loaded. So it's, yeah, you, you expect it to be 100% expended by now, but some of them were, you know, getting to like 90% already. And I just wanted to make sure that you thought we were okay in terms of, you know, supplies and all that kind of stuff.
I think so. Some of the supplies, we're actually still getting, Glenn Pratt is still paying for, or giving us things like wipes and masks and things that, that we hadn't really budgeted for. So that's been really good. And some of the other things, I'm just looking at the, like the Bridgeport bindery, that's actually getting reimbursed by the CPC. So some of the things that we're spending money on, we actually are, are getting reimbursed or, or not spending as much as, as we had. But, and once we stop doing the curbside, we won't have to spend so much money on, on plastic bags. That was a big expense that we really hadn't planned on. So, yeah, I think, I think we'll be okay. We are going to try to keep, you know, track it pretty closely because, you know, we still do have two more months of the year to go. Overall, we're looking.
Are we able to ask the town for reimbursement for those plastic bags or anything that had to do with COVID?
No, they, they have reimbursed. We just bought some, we had to add some more Plexiglas because now, we originally, we were just going to have one circ station open, but it's working out that we kind of need to have both open. And so we bought Plexiglas and I sent that, the bill over to Glenn and he, he paid for it. So I had been under the impression they didn't have any more money, but they still keep coming up with it. So we're going to keep trying to send over bills, you know, for things that we've had to pay for that are COVID related and see if they can, they can use the federal funds for that. So. But yeah, the bags, I haven't, I haven't asked him to pay for that. I, maybe I'll shoot him an email and see. I, I, maybe they've gotten extra funds that they, that, you know, originally they didn't think they'd have enough to pay for things like that. So it, it doesn't hurt to ask because that is coming out of our supplies money right now. So.
At least if you, if you need that money for something else. If you don't, then.
Yeah, yeah. Right. Maybe, maybe towards the end of the year, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll ask him. But, yep, that's it. That's all we got. Oh, and by the way, Carolyn, you know, you mentioned that Kennedy's, you thought that was kind of expensive. He's giving, he's going to do a free program for us as well. So he did his program just recently. And then Gail said he's going to do another one for free. So.
Oh, nice.
Which was really nice of him. Yeah.
That's great.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Can I ask a quick question about state aid without getting too much into the weeds? I, I saw that we got our second approval for the second half, part two. So is state aid ascertained by the size of our, of the towns or like what's? I can't figure out what the secret sauce is. How is it that, you know, we get 16,000 and then a town that I think is kind of the same size as ours, you know, gets 28,000 or?
Megan can speak to that. A lot of it has to do with things like spending, you have to, the MBLC requires certain numbers of support from town. And, and there's a whole report that she does every year that determines the formula, as far as I understand it at least. And part of it depends too on how much, how big the pool is before they split up the money. So. But Megan, I'm sure he can.
It's an interesting question Elaine asked. So is there any way that if we looked at that in detail, we could maybe brainstorm ways of, of pulling out a little more?
So there's two reasons it went up this year, the two biggest reasons. The first one is because there was more money put into the pot by the state. So they had voted an extra million into the state aid budget for libraries last year. So there was that. The other thing is we get funding based on basically how much we share. So if we've, a lot of our collection has gone into transit and is shared with other communities. All of that is counted. And I think we get, I mean, not much, but we get, you know, 10 cents per book. That's not correct, but we get, you know, a minimal amount per book that we share with other libraries. So there's always kind of a dance of wanting to keep a lot of items on the shelf for our patrons. But there's also a little dance of wanting to have the ability to share a good amount as well because we get more state funding, the more that we share. So we shared an awful lot this year. And because of COVID, we let our Red Hot Reads collection go, which is generally a collection that is a browsable collection. And that created a lot of circ stats for us, especially because we were sharing it with other communities. So that would be another reason why we saw such a nice boost this year. So those would be the two that I would identify as probably the biggest reasons why we saw such an increase this year.
Are there any other questions or comments on the, on the bill? And if not, could I have a motion to approve the two warrants?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Steve Brown.
Steve Brown, yes.
Mary Lou?
Mary Lou, yes.
Hi, Megan Brinsey?
Aye. Megan Brinsey, aye.
Thank you. Catherine, Harvey?
Aye. Catherine Harvey, aye.
Just so you know, when you turn off your video, we see Meg Wheeler. You need to change your picture.
Of course, at the same time, like opening the oven. So, yeah, okay. I'll, I'll leave it on and just get up if I have to.
No, 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 it's fine. I'm just telling you so you remember to change it. Therapy.
Thank you.
Therapy's aye.
Elaine?
Elaine Brazlo, aye.
Catherine O'Callaghan?
Catherine O'Callaghan, aye.
Lynn?
Linda Giacomo, aye.
And Carolyn Coffey, aye. Great. Thank you very much. And then on the chair's report, the only thing that I wanted to talk about was the strategic plan. Catherine and Catherine O'Callaghan and Megan and I sat down. Catherine had gone through the strategic plan that we did five years ago and had some suggestions and thought that our, a good course of action would be to update the plan that we have and resubmit it, perhaps as a five-year plan, but with the intention of it being more of a holdover plan until we have a sense of how we come out of COVID and then we can readdress how we want, you know, if things are going to be markedly different, we can, we can do a strategic plan anytime we want, but we can at least get a five-year plan filed with the MBLC so that we're eligible for the, the state aid and that sort of thing. So she, Catherine and Megan are working through and making sure that everything seems current and updated and, and then we can share it and have a chance to weigh in. Okay? Any questions or comments or anything? That was it for me. The CLT has not met since last time, but I will reiterate, the CLT is going to be in need of people who can help with development, can help with, you know, contacting people who might be interested in and able to work the library into their planned giving, into their wills and that sort of thing. So if anyone has any suggestions, please, please, please pass them along. I'm happy to reach out to anyone. Just let me know. And that's it for the CLT. Catherine, Harvey, how are the Friends doing?
Friends are doing well. We are mostly working on whether we're going to sign up with this gentleman who was going to do the, the book collection for us, Larry, whose organization, I don't have written down. I can't remember the name of it, but I do have a picture of, of one of his bins, which I happened to, to find in Norwell. So the upshot is that if we can find a couple of locations around town, which would not be at the library, but perhaps like at Stop and Shop or Shaw's or, you know, someplace where there's high traffic, then high visibility. We can't do the dump because the dump has another organization's bin there already.
Gotcha.
So that was also a question because we were sort of wondering if there was an agreement in place and we might run into some kind of a conflict, but it doesn't appear that there is an agreement in place. They, they are getting something from what we understand. They've been a little dodgy about it because nobody ever alerted the library or made any mention of any of this to us. But they are collecting the books and they're getting something in return from the organization that's collecting them, which I think in the end, we sort of felt like, you know, we have no problem with it if it's going into the, you know, facilities, you know, holiday party fund or something like, great, that's fine. Just like leave it alone. And, but still try to do our own thing. So one of the bigger questions involved is how it's going to influence our ongoing book sale. And so, you know, that's something that I think is going to be determined as we go along. But I think that it could be a major increase in revenue for us if we do it. We, Barbara has been in touch with a friend of hers who's on the Friends Board in Lincoln and they've been working with them for quite a while. And they're getting something like $600 a month from him, whereas we were, you know, hoping to clear 2,000 a year before in our ongoing sale. So we don't, you know, we don't want to dismantle our ongoing sale. We don't want to stop doing that. We've had some conversations about maybe moving it into more of an event-based model. I think we're sort of divided evenly about whether that's the direction we want to go in. But, you know, all of this is on the table. I think that we're going to try it out. We do have to go out and find places to put it. That's, that's a job for us. That's on our end. But then once we do it, he comes and empties them every week. And the other thing is if, if we should choose to go into more of an event-based model for the, for the ongoing book sale, we can go to his facility and we can take books from his facility for us to use at our book sale. And he has, I think, a much higher quality of inventory because he sorts through the materials as they come into his, his facility. So I think we're going to do it or we're going to at least try it out. We're not, I think we're, we've pretty much decided we're not going to sign an agreement with him. He's comfortable with just sort of like doing it on a handshake and just sort of seeing how it goes. And I think we're inclined to keep it that way also. So that's sort of where we are. You know, our next step is to, you know, sort of, a couple of us go out into the community and see if we can find places to put these, these collection bins. So.
How big are they?
That's some news. What's that?
How big are they?
It's about, it's about the size of like the clothing donation bins, I would say, you know, you know, a good size.
Yeah.
I mean, but he does, he has a root every week, so he empties it every week. And the one that I saw in Norwell, I, I don't, I can't put my hand on it right now, but I can send an email around to, to the group so that you can see, was very tidy, very neat, very presentable. You know, looked brand new. It wasn't like some of them that you see that looked like kind of beat up or not very attractive, very nice looking. So I think it, you know, any, any organization that is community minded, I, I don't think would have a problem putting it out. So if we could get it somewhere where it's high visibility, you know, I, I also think that another benefit is that it takes some of the burden off of the staff or people who are bringing books in all the time. So I think that's another, another major benefit to, to going this way.
So Catherine, is there signage that says that, that the proceeds go toward the Paul Pratt Memorial Library? Or how do people know what they're donating toward?
Yes. In fact, he will provide, he will provide the signage to go on the bin that will let people know that it's, that we're getting something for that. And I think it's something that we can probably promote through social also, you know, Linda can probably handle that part for us. Cause I mean, the response that we got to the book drop was overwhelming. I mean, you would not believe it. We, people were rolling through, what were you there for, three hours, Megan? And it was constant, all day, books, I mean, boxes and boxes and grocery bags. I mean, it was like too much for us to even keep up with. So, you know, mercifully, because we had already started the conversation with him, Beth got in touch with him the next day and he sent somebody later in the week to take all the discards because we filled up all of the shelves in the community room. We filled up the entire closet like three deep, the, the, you know, in the office. And then we had, I mean, that didn't include the children's titles and that didn't include a virtual mountain of discards. I mean, it was unbelievable how much we had. So, you know, there, there's definitely plenty of books out there in the community looking for homes.
And did you get, did he give you money for the ones that he came and picked up? Or was that just a thank you so much for getting them off our hands?
That was just a thank you so much. So for, for discards like that, he doesn't really typically, you know, if he's picking up discard, so like in other words, he will take library discards also, but he doesn't give anything for that. So that, that would be like a whole separate conversation, but it, it wouldn't necessarily have to do with the Friends arrangement with him. If that's something the library decided to do or if Megan and the staff decided to do. For those kinds of books, he doesn't give anything. But for this, for the donated books, you know, I think we end up getting something for a lot of the books that we just really can't sell ourselves that just sit on the shelves and don't move. So.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Well, good. It's great to explore new options.
Yeah. I mean, I think if it brings some more revenue for programming, it'll, it'll be great.
Yep. Does anyone have anything else that didn't otherwise appear on the agenda or have anything to add?
I, I just, I was in the library today. I just wanted to say how wonderful everything looked, even though the beautiful furniture is all over or put away. But how cleverly you have utilized the young adult desks that were in the middle of the YA room as display tables. And they, I love, they look great. And I love that the colors that were in the YA room actually even work in the main salon. And I just, so that was very clever. And I think you, you have all done such a beautiful job. And the YA art looks fresh and happy and wonderful. So, well done.
Thank you. Having the books displayed like that actually have two purposes. One is that it's a beautiful display. But secondly, we don't want anybody to stay for very long. So if we put display books all over the tables, they can't use them. It's terrible, but it helps. Current situation.
And I should have asked, and I'm sorry for not having done so earlier. Catherine, do you, Catherine O'Callaghan, do you want to add anything about the strategic plan?
I know, but I would encourage everybody to take a look at the one that we did in 2017. And if there's any suggestions or any comments based on that, updates that you feel should be included, please let Megan or I know.
All right. If there isn't anything else, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.